Should follow. But that, just wanted to give you an idea of what can happen from that standpoint. And that's just sales taxes. Franchise taxes will also go up because electricity usage will go up, cell tower usage will go up, telephone usage will go up. We get franchise taxes from all those utilities. So it's also tied to that. I just want to let you see that right there. Now, if we go over to page 12, I always have to bring this up and I'll keep you abreast of where we are. And this is what the wastewater treatment. If you look at page 12, that's liabilities. It shows what we owe. And to date, April the 30th, our current portion, if you look at the third line, $126,000 of wastewater treatment, and then that's accrued, and then another $438,000 actual payables. What I have to do is because I don't get the bills every month, so is that we can show some wastewater treatment on a current month financial, I accrued it. And I've been accruing $25,000 a month. So what's accrued in there is an estimate of what we owe for the months that we haven't gotten bills for. And then the 438 is what we owe to date when this goes back to about 16 or 17 months prior. That's a total of $564,000, current debt that we have to date. Again, it's subject to negotiation because, again, we are continuing to only pay 35,000, excuse me, 35% of the bills that we get in. And we do attach a statement to the invoice when we pay to university that we're only paying 35% contesting the current usage rate. If you look at on the long-term liabilities, you will see on the second line there, $87,000. And that right there is a long-term amount that's due on that original $500-plus thousand note that we entered into with the university some 10-plus years ago. So that's what's left of that, only $87,000. But that gives you an idea of the liability, how it has grown back up to over $500,000 new liability. Yes, sir?
Okay, two questions. Question number one is, when was the last time you received a bill?
I just got some bills just this month, and it's for three months, and we're going to pay those.
Okay. Which months?
It goes back to December, January, February.
So we're still missing March?
Yeah, well, yeah, because they don't send it to us. We don't give them time. So there's nothing we can do on that. Yeah, Ms. Dickie, she's on top of that.
Second question. So we're paying 35% of the bill that we're receiving as far as new, as far as the new debt. So when we're paying as far as the old debt, is that separate than the 35%?
Yeah, right, the old debt, we're paying $4,300 a month.
So we make $4,300 a month plus 35%?
$4,300 a month, 35% of what we get on a current basis, that's correct. And we have a note on that old debt, and we probably pay $4,300 a month on that. And that's what that $87,000 represents. That note goes against that. So that's going to be paid off in a short period of time, within three years.
Counselor Jones, have a question.
Yeah, Jones. Counselor Jones.
All right. Who is supposed to, do we know who exactly is supposed to like provide that bill or who gives us that bill to what we continue to be doing most of our time?
We're transferring from the university. It's signed by Shamilla Scott, I think is her name. But now, I believe the contractor taking care of that is SSC. But we get a bill from the university.
From the university, but we get it from their accounts receivable department.
Yeah.
So you've had, I guess you've had conversations with them about receiving the bill?
Uh, no, but I absolutely can call them and see.
I mean, I just.
I have.
I would just like to know what their.
Well, they, they send it roughly, on average, about two months.
Two months, right.
Two, sometimes you may get a three, but it runs about two months behind the current.
This last time, I got February and March together.
But that's been, that's been their procedure for whatever. And I have. That's it that I have tonight. One other thing, too. Throughout all of your different department financials, there are favorable and unfavorables. But again, the favorable situations are greater than the unfavorable, so that's why this overall budget is in a favorable position. At this particular point in time, Counselor Jones.
All right, JJ, could you take me to the page that shows the city's payroll?
City's payroll? Which department? Okay, if you look at, let's just start with general fund. Under the general fund payroll, current month of $49,000, that represents general administration, municipal court, and police. You'll see for the month, for the year, for the month, we incurred $49,000 versus budget of $59,000. And that's a favorable situation for this particular, overall, if you look at year-to-date, it's 325 versus 415 was favorable overall for the year. And that's primarily due into understaffing. If you look at, let's go over here to Public Works on page, go to page 13. Public Works, it's just Public Works Department. If you look at salary and wages for Public Works on page 13, look at April year-to-date versus April budget, you'll see $92,000 actual versus $91,000 budget. So it's right at budget, a little bit over, but it's right at budget. They've been fully staffed for the year.
Do you know how many people that is?
I don't have a count. As far as each department, I don't have a count right in front of me, but yeah, we do know.
Sixteen.
You got it? Sixteen, because it's on payroll. Sixteen payroll checks.
But the whole city or just Public Works?
No, that's what the whole city. Public Works is two, three, four. Am I right? Is it four people, Public Works? Yeah, four people in Public Works.
Three techs and a secretary.
And then the.
Your largest department manpower is police. They have the largest, from manpower standpoint.
And Chief, you guys have an honorary.
Four of those being part-time, correct, Chief? Four are part-time?
Where, where are we understaffed? Well, we started off the year understaffed. We, see, Chief had the staff up, and he's staffed, he's staffed up now, away right, Chief. Are you still understaffed? Okay. So he didn't have his, all of his reserve part-time officers until just recently. We went, we divorced out those.
Now, the police department's fully staffed according to the.
Yeah, right.
Your department is not fully staffed.
Administration.
Administration.
You don't have a treasurer.
JJ, would you mind listing all the positions that are in general for administration?
I knew.
Did you miss the positions that are in administration, so treasurer?
Yeah, administration, you got the mayor, city secretary, you got vacancy in the treasurer, and then you have the administrative assistants. You have two right now.
Correct. But they also take and accept utility payments.
Well, the utility person is, he's there for the staff.
Right.
And that's your staff, am I correct?
Yeah. But they're not just city staff. They, they're constantly.
Oh, well, yeah, right.
They're front desk.
Okay.
So it's all for the market, is it? Well, I'm saying, the mayor, treasurer, city secretary, you don't have a treasurer.
Well, the treasurer's not there, so it's four, Mrs. Treasurer.
Oh, wait a minute. She's there.
No, we.
Well, I'm just saying.
Yeah, the position does not fill.
Right.
Does not fill. Right now, she's administrative assistant.
Anything else for Mr. Jones?
Any other questions, my head?
Thank you, Sergeant. Municipal Court, Judge.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I passed out my report, and you should see it under some little goodie bags. Y'all have any questions regarding my report? I know you just had it today. There's nothing really special to report regarding the municipal court activity. It's just a standard review, cases filed, collection. And so if you don't have any questions regarding the report, you have some bags in front of you. You know, some bags in front of you. I am pleased to say that our second annual season citizen traffic safety symposium was a success. And so those bags that you see are the bags that we handed out to our symposium participants. And so those were some leftovers. We also had some more leftovers. And Officer Bennett, who is our community outreach police officer, is that correct term?
Crime prevention.
Crime prevention. He, he went out to some of the seasoned citizens who did not attend the symposium, and he handed out some bags out in the community. And so I wanted you all to see what we did, and it was a success. And it's not just a good time, it's actually something that promotes traffic safety among seasoned citizens. And they have some issues all of their own. Do you have your program and the program there? So you can see what some of the topics were that were presented and who the presenters were. This was a really, really good symposium, and I expect for it to be better next year. And I would like to publicly thank some of our sponsors. We had LimeBarker who sponsored our lunch. They were our second, and this one, Miss Williams is here, and she represents LimeBarker. But they, this was the second annual symposium, and they sponsored us for the second year. And then our sheriff, Argyle Smith, sponsored our breakfast this year. And this is our second symposium, and this is his second time sponsoring. So also on the back of the program, you see the different ones who sponsored. We had a pharmacist here from CBS, right there in Waller, she's a pharmacy manager. Dr. Kellma Johnson, she was here, and she gave out some really, really good information to the citizens regarding prescription wisdom. And so I won't read the program to you, you have it in front of you, but I'm just so grateful that we had it again this year. I appreciate the mayor and the city staff. U.S. Water was a sponsor for us this year. And this was no charge to the citizens. All of this was very valuable, but no charge to the citizens. After the symposium, we had what we call a carpet event. And a carpet event, carpet is where they measure your vehicle equipment to you to make sure that everything is in the proper distance, location, and that was really, really helpful. And I think we have some people here who attended the symposium. Some of the citizens are here who attended the symposium and the carpet event. So it appears, based on the feedback that I got, that everyone was pleased with the event. So do you have any questions regarding the report?
The event was absolutely incredible, and I just want to thank you again for your wonderful job, Judge. It was very well-intended and very informative.
Thank you, Mayor.
All the folks who made it up.
Thank you. Okay, any questions at all for me regarding anything?
Judge, while you're there, if you will, and update on the, any comments you want to share with our people meetings and.
I'm there.
I know, I know.
There are so many right now because.
In the general, I just want the council and residents to know that we're working on recouping losses that we incurred over.
We are.
Carback is 2015.
Right. We had our final, what we think is the final site inspection, it's called a verification site inspection, for 2015 disaster. And so I think once we present everything that they're requesting on that, we can get our final funds distributed that were set aside for that disaster. That was 2015. We had two in 2016, and they haven't requested anything else on 2016 unless I'm overlooking something. And right now, we're working on Harvey, which was 2017. And we have meetings, quite a few meetings. Harvey kind of changed the tone for everything. And so some of the things that we're going, we're actually going back and looking into for mitigation projects that, it is just so much right now. It could actually be overwhelming, if you would allow it to be overwhelming. But we're working through it, day by day, step by step, on a thing. Mr. Corey Bostick and Mr. Byron Huey, they're always readily available. And our Public Works people, there is no way I could do this FEMA project without our Public Works guys. They are very knowledgeable, they're always, they'll drop whatever and come over to the meeting. And everybody's just been really working hard and working together for the city. And there's no way that we can recover from this disaster without the police department, without Ms. Dickie. Everybody's working well together, that's a blessing. So we still have a long way to go. Our mitigation specialist came back out Thursday, and that's for this disaster, for the Harvey disaster. And it looks like, and he's working hard for us, too, trying to find some projects that they can fund. So we have some that FEMA will be able to do, possibly five different projects. Don't ask me to name them right now, but they are in my email, possibly five different mitigation projects. And then we have some more that we may be able to go after from the state, from the Texas Department of Emergency Management.
So we've got a letter a couple weeks ago from Governor Greg Abbott in response to our letter to him about funding for the, I'm writing a response to your letter about funding for the 25% local match for FEMA 404 Hazard Litigation Grant Program. And what that is essentially is where we would normally have to pay 25% of it, because FEMA, as Judge said, is just taking on different proportions with this disaster, that we are likely to get some help with that 25%. So we could almost have a close to 100% reimbursement claim for all of our costs, things that grow, manpower, used equipment, things like that.
And Mayor, I'm not prepared right now, but you may be, I should remind you if you want to speak to that notice of intent that we sent in for this huge litigation project that we may or may not be working with the county.
Is that the one for the 742, 742 house?
Yes.
That's a different. Basically, the allocation throughout Waller County is a disaster. We have two choices, basically. One, to fall totally under the filings with the county. And at the FEMA meeting with the county, they made it very clear that whoever gets the check controls the check. Recently, they broke down that allocation and basically said purr views approximate portion, this is no money in hand, but based on our damages, is roughly $742,000, counting abatement of all the people whose home went out.
Okay, this was.
Okay, well, I'll incorporate it with my Public Works report. So this is, again, this is in our requirement to keep the council and the public aware of what we're doing, because those damages that are out there are things that we're actively working on. So combined with Public Works and the hurricane disasters, just letting council know and public that there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes to try to go back and get a lot of revenue for the city.
Thank you. And if any of you all ever want to stop by my office and ask questions or look at details regarding any of this, please feel free.
Chief Solomon?
Good evening. Good evening. You have my report? Do you have any questions or anything on that report? If you don't, let's talk a little bit about emergency management. We've put together a committee, and I think the first meeting we had was really, really productive. Chief Pardo, myself, Sergeant Garrett, the guys from Public Works, and the judge. We're looking for more and more people to get into this. On our website, if anybody wants to be a part of this, on our website, you can go on and sign up at NIMs. You can also take the training there as well. If you're looking at that training and you need us to help you walk through it, we can do that. This is hugely important, because what we're trying to do, and what we started doing the other day, we want to be self-proficient. We don't want to have to go outside to get anything. Doing this last thing with Harvey, when we first started out, I went to some of the meetings with the county and people of that nature, and they said, okay, well, we'll have this for you, and we'll have this for you. But once that day hit, we didn't have any of those things. So we need to become self-proficient. We've got the 1033 program that allows us to get a lot of those things, and we've got Sergeant Garrett working on those. We've got different people working on different sections in order to get some things. We've already started making progress. We're going to turn this room here into an incident command room. We've started making progress on that. We're going to have phone jacks and all those things put in. We're making those calls, but we want to become self-proficient. The people of purr view, we have to, they need to look to us to take care of them in situations like that, and not the state, not the county. And so that's what we, that's what we want to do. I think we've made some real progress in getting there. So, but if any of you want to join that or be a part of that, Councilman Jones actually called me the other day, because he was looking at something where he's seen that they gave some boats away to the city of Houston, the 100 Club. So he started working on that for us, and he's going to give myself and Chief Pardo that letter, and we're going to, we're going to go to 100 Club and see if we can do that. We're also getting, looking at boats with this 1033 program, because the boat that we got back here, it's just not going to float when it comes time. So we need to get something different. So we're looking at all those things, and we're looking to see, not so much on the finance side, but being ready for when this thing happens, because there's other places that you can get this equipment. So we're just looking at all of our avenues, and that's what's there. And so we could, we could use help. And incident command and running one of these things takes a lot of people, because a lot of things are done, it takes a lot of people to do. So if you want to be a part of it, citizens and all, it's on the website, take a look at it, and see what you think. It'll be a good thing. Any questions?
Well, we have our own procedure protocol for the.
Yes, sir.
When will, when will we get that? So council will be updated on the process if something happens as far as, because you're the, you're the incident command person, so.
I understand, coordinate, also, Assistant Chief Pardo is coordinating on the fire side. He will be actually calling all incidents, and we'll start putting all those things together. And so what you're saying, we'll start putting those together as we go to our meeting. Our next meeting is on the 21st. We'll come back to that meeting, and we will look at the progress we made on getting the things that we need to start to let them become self-proficient.
What time on the phone, Chief?
10 o'clock.
Good idea. Okay, so, thank you. Ordinance report. Counselor Wade.
I have, I have, I think, Officer.
Mr. Jones? Is that any way possible that we can move that to the department? Park, that's a report, eight.
Yeah.
My question, please, Ben, or if you're correct, is this is the correct time, right, to ask my question upon who has the agenda, how the agenda is set, and administration?
Yes, we've already moved on from administration. You can bring it up at the end of the meeting when you talk about future agenda items, because that is on the agenda.
Yeah, but I mean, I just got permission from the mayor to go back to the, that we haven't voted or moved on.
If the mayor, yeah.
Right. Let's go ahead and ask your question.
So, Ms. Dickie, when we say, when we send emails upon the agenda asking for questions for things to be put on the agenda, and we vote properly upon that agenda item, does it, they go on to the agenda or that's not the process?
I think by way of example, we could make better address your concern. What was it you sent, and it's not on the agenda, so we can be specific as well as we talk in generalities.
I was just trying to be general to have a discussion, because we also, the following meeting before this one, we had made a motion and moved that just special meeting agenda item be moved to this meeting. That item is not on there. For about the past six weeks, me personally and other council members have been emailing and asking for things to be put on the agenda, and they have not been put on the agenda. So, and the basis, we, we can't necessarily do work as council if our item does not hit the agenda to be voted up upon. And then also, it's quite funny, because I could see that some items are on here, but just underneath mayor reports. So that's like basically a slap. Personally, just trying to keep it general, but personally, in my face, just basically not allowing me to follow through and do work that I'm set out to do, as well as voted into do in office. And I mean, we all sit up here, we all do work. So if one of, if one of us makes a mistake, then the whole city goes back. If one of us do good things, of course, the mayor gets approval, the city gets approval, everybody is working upon the same board. Like Judge said, she said, everyone is basically playing their role and a part of the committee as the city council. We have to play our role. And one major part of our role is for items to hit the agenda, which if we vote upon it, then we also stated that we emailed Ms. Dickie Wednesday that our items will hit Friday. And I haven't seen that come to fruition, so I would like to know the process of how that moved.
Well, let me answer specifically. Item three that you moved, you carried over to the next council meeting. If you look at the regular agenda items, item four, five, four and five are how council brought this to you to pick up, discuss, take action. All of that is item three that you say was not carried over. So it was broken down into two, based on the way council said, and the emergency issue. Item three was secretly brought upon me, because once I became aware of these low water pressure concerns at Brookside, my responsibility is to put it before the council. But as, as we agreed on June 5th, because I was just handing you the information, so you can review it and be prepared for today, that is item three. So that's not correct.
I don't see how that's item three when you read discuss and take action on current emergency concerns, people low water pressure at Brookside apartment on Riches Road. And now you read today's agenda, and I mean, that we moved, it's supposed to be specifically placed on the following agenda, how we read it and how it was on that previous agenda.
Well, the, the issue, and council, correct me if I'm wrong, because I put together item three, council wasn't here. and the intent was to put information in your hands
It's, it's supposed to take action.
For, for you to act on. Yes, Counselor Jones? I, I think, uh, for example, if you look at Dundon Administrator, when we got the minutes for this meeting, under new business, future agenda items, there are several things listed that we asked to be on the agenda from our last meeting, which is May fourteenth. Of the minutes that we approved, and, and from, from May fourteenth. And so we voted to put certain things on the agenda that should have been on this next agenda. I think those are some of the examples that, that, uh, Counselor Jones was referring to. Can you give me the example? Uh, like, uh, so, for one, uh, we were supposed to discuss building for wastewater treatment plant with Dr. Finley of Purdue University, Councilman Wendy Williams, conversation on new Grant Hill apartment...